Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting to Order for December 18, 2024. Let's start by a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just want to remind all of those that are in the audience that we are being livestreamed today and that your comments will be a part of that livestream if you've come and addressed the Board of Commissioners. We first have on our agenda today the approval of minutes for the December 4th, 2024 workshop meeting minutes and the December 11th, 2024 Legislative Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve those meeting minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Pries.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Next up is the December 11th, 2024 Salary Board Meeting. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Controller Bateman. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Pries. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Executive Sessions held between meetings. Mr. Pies.
Good morning, Commissioners. There were three executive sessions held between meetings. On December 12th, the Commissioners had an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding consideration on the sale and lease of real property, 2025 budget matters, matters of personnel. In addition to the Solicitor's Office, Jay Wanger of RBC, Scott Sheer, BFM, and Christopher Davis, Budget and Finance Director of Dolphin County, were present to discuss the sale and lease of real property in 2025 budget matters. The second meeting on December 17th, the Commissioners had an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding pending litigation, 2025 budget matters, county contractors, county authorities, and matters of personnel. In addition to Solicitor's Office, Christopher Davis, Budget and Finance Director of Dolphin County, was present to discuss the 2025 budget matters. Third meeting on December 18th, Commissioners had an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding a legal services contract.
Any questions for Mr. Pies? Hearing none. This is the first opportunity that we have in our public meeting for public participation on agenda items. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to participate on any of the agenda items today? State your name and address, please.
Good morning, Missions.
Morning, Company.
Pamela Parsons, Holly Street in Harrisburg City. I'd like to draw your attention to item 68 on the agenda under things that you are going to act on today. It's an agreement between Dolphin County District Attorney and Gary Lathrop for strategic emotional and spiritual support for Dolphin County Municipal Police Officers and their departments and first responders not to exceed forty thousand seven nine seven. Because there is no link and all I know about this is what is here. I have a couple of questions, concerns. One is in the minutes of your March 6th, 2024 meeting, an item L, you approved a purchase or service agreement. For Mr. Lathrop is for thirty four thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. Just wondering, I don't know how those are different or what they are for. But my understanding is that Mr. Lathrop, in addition to being an attorney, is also a pastor at Hershey Free Church. I know that he had chaplaincy contracts with many municipalities in Dolphin County, including the city. And I believe he might still have one with the city. I'm just wondering what strategic support is. And also, in just looking at how we spend money and the fact that our county is diverse, how does someone who is a pastor at a church that does not ordain women, that does not support queer and trans folk, how is that person able to meet the needs of all of our municipal police officers and first responders in their departments? Some of which include women and some of which include queer folks. Just another one of those questions I'm asking about how we spend our money. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can I just ask a quick question since you probably have it in front of you? Was the former contract that you referenced on the previous agenda, was that through the DA's office as well? I'm just more curious. I imagine it is. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. All right.
Yes, it is. Purchase of service agreement between Dolphin County District Attorney and Gary Lathrop.
For a chief clerk, is it potential that that was just delayed and that it was last year's same agreement as this? I'm just more curious with the transition and everything. That's a possibility, right?
It's a possibility that it's replacing that one, but I would have to do more research. I don't want to speak out of turn.
Here's what I'll offer. And if we could research the terms of both contracts and make a determination of whether or not it was a six-month contract, twelve-month contract, taking into account those comments that were provided, but also provide sort of the scope and the amounts of the contract and whether or not, you know, it's been a yearly contract or not, and provide that information to Ms. Parsons. All right, thank you. Any other questions on today's agenda items? All right. Salary Board, Tunisia. Good morning.
I'd like to request a vote on Salary Board Item A, one through two, one and two.
Good answer, question. The budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Pries. Any discussion?
Yeah, I want to thank the public defender for following through on her promise to abolish the positions at the appropriate time.
Any additional comments or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Human resource packet, Tunisia.
I'd like to table item number fifty five. There are some questions from the Chief Clerk and Commissioner's Office on that item, but otherwise approved. One hundred through fifty-four, sorry, one through fifty-four and then fifty-six through one oh two.
So I would first entertain a motion to table item fifty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. And now entertain a motion to accept the remainder of the personnel packet as presented. Moved by Commissioner Pries.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Is there any discussion?
Is everything contained herein within the budgeted amount for the year?
It is.
Thank you.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you, Tunisia.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas. Happy holidays.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Just to point a clarification, the contract for thirty four thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars expires December 31st.
Got it. So this would be an upcoming year contract.
That's what it appears.
Gotcha. All right, but we'll still get the specifics of that information to you. Chris?
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
I have no changes to the investment report that was sent out this morning. The only thing I'll note, Three Plus One has put out a quote request for some various term investments and rates for our bank account. That'll wrap up on Friday. I drug it out because the Fed has slated to meet at 2:00 PM today, so to try and get an answer before that decision would be detailed. There's also no changes to the purchase order packet that was sent out. That is ready for your vote and approval.
If I could just first on the investment account. I know that, I guess congratulations are in order. I will usurp and out of order one of the talking points related to the budget. But this year, I think successfully you've been able to manage and this county's been able to manage our county concentration account and ensure that every dollar that's made is less of a dollar that we need to rely on for taxpayer monies because we've invested that in a legal and prudent way and have wasted no time to do so. I think you've received the prestigious ninety-plus award from Three Plus One, which means that we are in the upper part of the entire nation related to both timing of investments and returns. I think 2022, this board had received, and obviously some of this is contingent significantly on interest rates, which you don't control, but taking advantage of those opportunities is critically important. One point six million is what we made from our investment account in 2022. This year it's well over five million. So those are things that, from an active management standpoint, that we continue to do well and you deserve credit, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, purchase order packet. Do we have a motion on the purchase order packet in front of us today?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Douglas.
Second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Pries. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you, sir. You got the budget.
Yeah, twenty twenty-five budget. So the budget has been advertised and out for public inspection for the required inspection period. So I'm here with the budget looking for approval. We have had some changes to what was proposed. The general fund is, request is down to two hundred twenty-two million, one hundred twenty-five thousand, six hundred two dollars, which is a one point four million increase from twenty-four or point six three percent. I will skip the next few pages of the packet because that's just highlighting it in different categories for you to review.
What was the, what was the million increase? You said it was one point six three percent increase, but what?
One point four million dollars or point six three percent from last year. And I'm, I'm going through the packet that I sent out this morning. So H5, it's a reminder, there's still a one point five mil tax increase for 2025, which is twenty-one point eight percent increase from twenty-four. Just to highlight again, the initial budget projections going into twenty-four projected a fifty-four million deficit for twenty-five. There were a combination of increasing revenue, debt restructuring, and cost saving measures that was able to get reduced down to fifteen point nine million. A couple of changes we've had from what was proposed, we've had a few departments budgets knocked down, the board's request to get budgets closer to where we expect actuals to land.
And could you, could you give a, an estimate on the amount of money that was, that was lowered as a result of recent conversations between the board?
In total, it's a little over six million.
So we have, we've had a, we've had a six million dollar reduction since the proposal was first put out.
Yeah, the other, the rest of the highlights on there are unchanged, but number nine, we've had an additional forty-two positions have had their salary and benefit costs removed from the twenty-five budget, resulting in a reduction of two point seven million, which is part of that six. These positions were vacated prior to one one twenty-four and have remained vacant throughout all of twenty-four. The positions remain on the books and will continue to be reevaluated prior to filling.
And that's really an important note. I know that we've had discussion. Commissioner Pries is one who requested that that be placed into this particular budget. I know our goal is not to, you know, punish folks, but the actively manage and justify as you move forward, positions that have not been filled for a year. And quite frankly, you know, I want to first extend my thank you to the courts as well because they have also followed suit. In partnership, they have also were willing to take a look at these positions and then have their folks who are in those departments come in and justify those future expenditures. And quite frankly, there's been partners throughout county government that have assisted us in sort of taking the lead in this kind of approach. And it allows for, and quite frankly, makes folks justify positions. And I hope has people thinking about how can we professionalize county government services? What is it that we can do to readjust and think about how we move forward? And thinking differently starts with asking questions for each position. And if it's not been filled actively for a year, we want to hear some justification as to why we should move forward with these spots. So thank you to Commissioner Pries for, for that suggestion.
Yeah, my only other note, I'll just, as you mentioned, seventeen of those forty-two positions were within the board's budget. And that was, as you mentioned, the cooperation of the PJ or President Judge. Those are the only changes. I will note that I have not received any phone calls, emails, or other official inquiries regarding the budget that was placed out for inspection. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
If I can, I've got several. The first one is, it's really important to note what a structural budget deficit is versus filling up revenue or expense issues with one-time shot in the arm. You know, from my perspective, this, this budget operation does not happen at budget season. It happens long before even the start of the year with being able to set goals. I've got a list of things that this board has been able to accomplish that has quite frankly allowed us to be in a position to mitigate the impact. Because I will tell you, there's not any of us up here that have felt any, anything, but let's try to figure out a way to reduce this on time. Let's figure out every way to manage county government and not put it to our taxpayers. And I can speak for both colleagues in saying that that has been their driving force and that has been their passion. And that's been, you know, it's been heated discussions, but they, they have resulted in a significant level of improvement. And I want to go through that list, but I think it's first important to demonstrate, we went from fifty-four million in a budget deficit this year to fifteen point nine, which is significant. That work, we can outline what that is, but absent the ability to close that gap, particularly without the ability to have recurring revenue, can you please? can you please demonstrate to us the kind of increases that this board is looking at? And again, without recurring revenues that are compounding, that come in annually, a one-time shot in the arm is only trying to be reactive to close a current budget deficit. So, you know, this structurally, we believe has mitigated even more than a four mil tax increase that could have happened without any significant action because we haven't raised taxes for nineteen years. And you take a look at a dollar nineteen years ago and take a look at a dollar now, take a look at all of those costs, management of government, increased union contracts, they, they continue to roll. But tell us what that budget deficit would have looked like, absent the ability to close the gap or have recurring revenue.
Yeah. So as it, as it looked at the end of, when we passed the twenty-four budget, um, we, we were looking at a fifty-four million dollar deficit in twenty-five and with no increases or no anything, um, that we've done over the course of the year. It was fifty-four million in twenty-five, projected a hundred and thirteen in twenty-six and a hundred and seventy-seven million in twenty-seven.
Those are serious numbers. I mean, again, one mil is fifteen million dollars in revenue. Uh, we're talking about a hundred and seventy-seven million in a gap, absent the ability to have recurring revenue and to be able to make these cuts. So again, folks wonder, when you close gaps, doesn't that solve the problem? And I think that the structural issues of the running of county government, there has to be revenues that match the current level of expenditures. And we are trying to keep those expenditures under any kind of inflationary rates and still try to manage a professional workforce that is attractive to employees and raise the minimum wage, all, all some of the things that we're attempting to try to do. But, um, we need recurring revenue in order to meet those projections. So we don't have to come back to taxpayers. So I think that's a really important process to note. I also like to, if I could, um, you know, healthcare, pension cost and county concentration account. I mean, three areas that while the market drives a significant amount and utilization drives a significant amount with the appropriate wellness plan, active management of the retirement board, um, and when we talk about bond rating and future outlook, we can say those are trending all in the right direction. Uh, we've seen a reduction in our healthcare expenses because we want to reward employees for that, that take care of their health and figure out a way to do long-term disease maintenance and management and figure out ways to encourage them and incentivize them to be healthy. Uh, that is something that I think we can build on and continue to improve as we move forward. The county pension fund, and it's been no secret, I've expressed my concerns about the poor performance that existed, um, the first year of a new advisor. Uh, but we have rebounded and the markets have rebounded in a way that allow both our alternative strategy that are non-market driven and our overall pension fund uh, to see a great outlook. We've seen the first reduction in our actuarially determined contribution, uh, this year. And we expect as we look at these returns, uh, our actuary to continue to say that future reductions will exist as a result. And, and as you continue to make revenue in those county concentration accounts, and it's, and the reason why I mention these things, when the, the bond raiders come in and talk to what's the county doing to actively manage the county? Well, these are the areas that we need to actively manage and stay actively managed. These are areas where we can show positive trends, positive direction and a financial outlook that is not looking like we are doom and gloom. We are actually moving in the right direction. It doesn't happen by the board saying it to happen. It happens by directors and employees and, you know, a team and including, I want to say this again, the courts being a part, uh, and the board of commissioners trying to actively manage that budget through and through. So I think those intangibles are important to note. I've got a list which I've read before. I don't know if I want to go painstakingly through them, but I don't know if I want to relive all the things we've done since December, uh, to be able to manage the budget. And I think it's already in the record. Um, but we have taken steps to restructure debt. We figured out a way to cut expenses. We figured out a way to eliminate positions. We figured out a way to make investments and see returns. Uh, I think there was about fourteen or fifteen items that we have gotten through, and we've also figured out a way uh, to put ourselves in a positive outlook moving forward. Uh, I would hope that this, um, attempt to, to address the structural budget deficit won't have to be revisited for a couple of future years. So, um, the idea of having to go back to taxpayers is our goal to not do. Uh, and to be able to ensure that the county is in a position to start to lead and do good things for people is really the goal of this board. So that, uh, that, that has been the attempt. And, um, anything you want to add related to those comments?
Um, the only thing I'll add is part of the debt restructuring. Obviously we saw, uh, I think it was thirteen million dollars in, in relief in our budget just from that. But we were also able to gain funds to address capital needs and other things without having that factored into this budget. Um, and coming back to in, increased taxes as a result of that either.
And, and we've done that, and Commissioner Douglas is going to talk here, I'm sure about his insistence on raising the minimum wage and trying to be able to take care of some employees. So at this time, if you want to ask some questions or make a statement.
Just a, a few quick things. If we don't raise taxes, we'll need to use our reserves this year, correct? What reserve? Well, I mean, we would, we would be, we would be, we would be depleting, right? And, and in that, just for, for the sake of people understanding the impact that would have on our bond rating, I, I, we, we would, it seems as if we've been signaled by financial planners that that could have an impact on our bond rating, correct? I just want to make sure we understand that's kind of like our credit score, if you will.
Yeah, correct. If, if taxes were not to go up, um, at some point in the year, and it might be sooner, it might be later, um, essentially we'd run out of money in the general fund.
Sure.
Um, from a bond rating perspective, um, as multiple experts have told us that the main thing they look at is money in the bank. What you have in reserves in the general fund to operate. That is the biggest driving factor that they look at when they do the rating along with a plenty of other things. So when they see that there, there's no increase, that, um, your, your savings essentially are going down, that starts to have negative effects on the bond rate.
Sure. So, uh, Commissioner Harwick asked about an outlook and you gave multiple years. I guess I would just ask just for the sake of the public being aware, uh, we started this year with a, we started these budget talks with fifty-four million deficit going into twenty twenty-five. If we were to not raise taxes, uh, what would the deficit likely be going into twenty twenty-six?
I mean, if you were to not raise taxes, um,
or e- even if it's a ballpark number or close, because I know you, you gave us these projections.
If you were to not raise taxes, the projections look like we would be negative fifteen point nine million in the general fund at the end of twenty-five.
So we'd be negative fifteen point nine, and then we'd be going into a year where we'd have increased costs with cola raise, all that kind of stuff. Yes. So, so we'd be, we'd be in, um, uh, uh, probably more than a fifty-four million dollar deficit situation, uh, not to mention the fifteen million we'd have. Okay. I, I'm just trying to give people a picture of like the options, the levers that we had to pull here. Um, based on, we, we've talked about a plan that we have, that this is part of a larger plan with other, uh, you, you referenced infrastructure, a bond we took out to invest in our infrastructure, you know? Part of not having a tax increase for nineteen years means some of our infrastructure has suffered and not been invested in. Given the plan that we've, we're, we're, we're enacting here, uh, would it be fair to say for the, for the foreseeable future, the next few years? It, it, it would be fair for citizens of Dolphin County not to expect a tax increase moving past this? Like we, we have a plan. Now plans change. I just want to be clear. I'm not, I'm not trying to hold your feet, my feet, anybody's feet to the fire, but I guess we're trying to think about, um, long-term here in this particular plan, right?
Yeah. I mean, I would qualify that, but if all goes according to plan, then yes.
Sure. And, and that's, that's what we're hoping for. Okay. Um, yeah, go ahead. Yes, please do.
Stuff flows downhill and at the term of using a negative word, we rely on state federal dollars for a number of our administration. And we don't control those outcomes nor do we control market conditions. Uh, but and, and you know, there's areas of concern. Mental health, you've heard me say it multiple times. Drug and alcohol monies are not covering costs. We've got aging that was cut last year. Aging was cut last year from the state government side. So, I mean, those are all things that if we're going to adequately provide level of support, we may have to put in additional county resources even just to keep and maintain this current level of funding. So there are many challenges on the horizon that we don't control, but I think this puts us in the best financial position to manage over the next couple of years without going to taxpayers for it.
Yeah. This budget reflects a sixteen dollar an hour, uh, minimum wage for county workers, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's the extent of my question.
Commissioner Pries.
First, I want to thank you and your staff again, the great work that you've done over the last several months preparing the budget, putting it out there for public display. I want to thank my colleagues for taking the time to work with me as well on going over line on my line item and finding, uh, additional millions to cut, uh, from the current budget. Uh, I have one question wasn't brought up yet. Is the, is there an increase in the library tax within this budget?
There it's not.
There's not. Okay. Yeah, I have no further questions.
Okay, I have one more question. Can, can we simplify this for taxpayers in the sense of, um, just, just trying to, I, I want to make sure people understand because look, I, I don't understand bills and all this, like, you know, what that, I'm just going to say, I was ignorant to that, so it took some time for me to understand. But can we simplify it in the sense of if I'm currently have a house that's worth a hundred thousand dollars, here's what I'm paying now. What I'll be paying in the future is X or like, do we have some type of way of communicating that simply for them?
Yep. Yeah, this is on page seven of your packet. It's also, um, for the public going to be on page seven of the budget that will be posted online. Um, so for a, a house that's assessed at a hundred thousand dollars, the annual increase would be a hundred and fifty dollars or twelve fifty a month. I mean, just for scale, if it's two hundred thousand, it would be a three hundred dollar increase and twenty-five dollars a month. Um, and there's a few other levels there.
Thank you. And each mill represents sort of how much in tax revenue, fifteen, around fifteen.
Correct.
So that's my question.
There, again, there are other opportunities for savings, other opportunities for revenue generation that we have, um, you know, that we are planning to execute and ways that we are continuing to try to field against those future things that we can't control. Uh, and, um, I, I know that this board is willing to exercise a, a number of different, uh, options related to avoiding any kind of burden to taxpayers. So I mean, those are things that continue to, to, to move forward and, and we are committed to not increasing those taxes. But you talk about nineteen years, uh, without a increase. Uh, this is certainly one that, uh, from a structural and budget gap perspective, I think, I don't know if we could have figured out a way to cut or manage. Um, and we've, we've done it actively. So thank you for your work and thank to the others. Is there any other, other questions for Mr. Davis? Two, two things I know in this budget that have the opportunity for, for savings are the Health and Human Services consolidation, which could potentially save us another twenty-five million over the next twenty years. And the last piece is this board's took the initiative to invest in a violent crime task force that will hopefully uh, assist in dealing with some of the violent issues within the city with, um, uh, the ability to gain and ascertain both intel and a police presence and, and a level of, uh, engagement to serve and protect and secure and make safe the residents of Harrisburg, uh, with we've, we've taken a leadership role and tried to set the example for that. So tho- those are the two areas of investment that I believe were critically important for us to make. And I think they will all be important for the safety of all taxpayers.
Just for point of clarification, the, the human services project vote that we're going to take today is one of the line items in here for the building at Tech Port, but that is not part of today's budget.
It is not, no.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chris? Uh, yeah, take a vote now on, and this would be resolution number nineteen, twenty twenty-four. Is that correct? No.
No, you're, you're passing the, you're going to take a vote on the actual item of the adoption of the twenty twenty-five calendar year budget. You'll, the tax levy will be under matters requiring board action is two separate votes.
I will take a motion for the adoption of the twenty twenty-five calendar year budget.
So moved.
Do we have a second? I will second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Chief, or, uh, chief clerk's report, Mr. Pies.
Commissioners, I have nothing to report unless there are questions of me.
Any questions for Mr. Pies? Solicitors report, Mr. Owens.
Thank you. Uh, all matters, um, requiring board action have been reviewed, uh, and approved for action by the solicitor's office.
Any questions for Mr. Owens? Quite a healthy agenda today. Uh, one through, I believe, eighty-nine. And then we do have to, uh, take some level of action on the former business, but do we have a motion on items one through eighty-nine uh, on the packet? And is there anything that needs to be pulled out and or voted separately?
I'd like to vote separately on forty-eight and sixty-eight.
Forty-eight, sixty-eight. Commissioner Pries?
Seven. Two. Six.
I'd like to vote separately on item two. Item six. Item eighty-four. And those items are, uh, agreement between Dolphin County, Children, Youth and Tucker, Aaron'sburg, commercial McClellan provide transition plan for the new agency senior management term. Item six is resolution number nineteen dash twenty twenty-four, a tax levy and appropriation for twenty twenty-five. And the last one that I would like to vote on separately is forty-four termination of agreement with Greenlee Partners for Government Relations and Lobbying Services.
Eighty-four. Okay, you're two, six and eighty-four.
I'm forty-eight and sixty.
And you are forty-eight and sixty-eight. All right. Uh, so do we have a motion to accept items one, um, three through five? Uh, you know, e- every item with the exception of two, six, eighty-four, forty-eight, sixty-eight. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, are there any discussion?
Yes, I, I would like to just make some comments about some of the things, uh, we're passing here just for, for the public. Um, seven through nine, you're going to see local share municipal grant on there. It's just important more for a process and maybe events you can, uh, share to this a little bit as well. Um, these are local share municipal grants that have already been voted on, that have already gone through, um, but they have compliance, uh, factors that bring them back to our agenda to just simply, uh, continue to say that they're meeting compliance or that, uh, yeah, can you explain that a little bit? Just because I want to make sure people know we're not voting on new gaming grants at this time.
Yeah, I think you surmised it well, and we've been doing these throughout the year.
Yes.
Um, these are ones that were voted on in the last round. It's again, like you said, they're not new, but we have particular grantees that have like stipulations put on the money, could be that they're not allowed to come back the next year or not allowed to go to other similar grant programming, and that just doesn't fall into that. I, I use this word, I don't like it, but the cookie cutter local, uh, you know, local share municipal, you know, the grant agreements that we have that kind of keep the process moving. But these ones have their own stipulations. That's why the board has to consider them separately.
Great. Um, forty-nine through fifty-four. Um, these are really important E-Rap money that we're getting out. Uh, Randy, do you mind speaking to it? I hate to put you on the spot, but it's really important stuff that the community knows. If, if you're, if you're open to it, I just think this is going to actually make some real impact in affordable housing and our unhoused population. And yeah, can you just speak to some of the impact these five are going to have? I'm, I'm excited to support them.
Yes, I'm actually thrilled to speak on these. Um, in the emergency rental utility assistance program funding that came during the pandemic for, for both a federal and a state allocation, a portion of those funds could be used for, uh, lack of a better term, bricks and mortar. And this could support low income housing opportunities for the next twenty years. So these particular providers have agreed to that process. A lot of these are rehabbing properties that then can become low income housing. And we're very excited about these opportunities for families, um, in that income bracket to get safe, affordable housing.
Thank you for your efforts on this. I know it was a lot of work and a, a pretty heavy lift to, to get these out the door because I know we had a timeline to get them out the door in a certain time. And thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I just want to comment to eighty-three, uh, Tech Port, uh, when I first, uh, took my oath of office, within the first month, we were already talking about this project in the sense of how we could move all of our human services to one facility. I know it came with a lot of different conversation back and forth. And we're here today. I feel like we have crossed a very important finish line with this one, uh, in coming to agreement. And, uh, and I know it hasn't always been easy for all of us to come to, to, to a conclusion, but I do think this particular conclusion is going to be to the benefit of, um, of our residents in that, uh, you know, it's a ten point four million dollar investment here and even beyond that with, you know, retrofitting that facility, but, um, it could really be a great hub for the community to go to, to have their needs met. Um, to have all of our human services in one location. I want to thank Commissioner Harwick and all of his work on this. I know this was your vision along with, uh, along with Randy and, uh, and I'm just thankful for, for seeing this across the finish line today. Uh, and then finally, I just want to comment, it's no secret of, you know, some of the, the things I've been harping on lately, but I want to talk about eighty-six and eighty-seven. As you're going to see, these are agreements with McNeese Wallace Nurek. This represents Adam Santucci, who's our, uh, our, our labor council. And I just want to say, um, I've been in the room with Adam quite a bit, uh, and I find him to be competent, professional. He does great work for us. And, uh, I for one, even given things I've, I've, I've clearly, uh, drawn concerns about, uh, these particular agreements, I'm excited to support today.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. Commissioner Pries, any comment?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on item eighty-three, approval to execute sales agreement for the purchase thirty-
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on item eighty three, approval to execute sales agreement for the purchase thirty seven twenty one Tech Port Drive. For ten point four million, as Commissioner Douglas said, uh, want to thank Commissioner Hartwood for the work that he's done over the years. Uh, this has been a plan in progress for several years to take all these buildings that we're leasing individually and have a, a one stop shop complex for human services in Swetera Township. And I just want to, uh, before I vote on it, uh, I had asked before that we communicate with the officials in Swetera Township, and we have done so.
We had a conversation last meeting, actually.
That's correct.
Very good. Thank you.
We got here late. I was wondering if I'm on eighty three. Just go. The comment would be, I'm sorry. I guess it's one of a few times you'd be happy to see me. On item.
But you notice I, as a point of personal privilege, I, you know.
I, I think it's, we need to get together.
We do.
Do. Uh, so on eighty three, I would point out, and what I would request is that the district with that transaction stands to lose about ninety four thousand dollars. So what I would say to you, I hope we can have a discussion for a pilot. That's a significant amount of revenue. Um, that's it. Just want to put it on the table. Don't want to oppose the transaction, but we're instituting full day kindergarten at Sanford Off at thirteen schools. And it's a lot of money.
I thought this would be a good request, not a request for money, but that's okay. And, and we, we, the plan was to get together and discuss that.
I'll, I'll give you a call.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah.
All, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, let's take up items. Two, six, uh, let's start with two.
Okay. Uh, can we just get more of a, a clarification on what is occurring there and the cost? I don't see a cost in here, and as has been brought up before, we put costs for four hundred dollars and sixty dollars, but I have a feeling this cost is much more significant than that, so I would like to know the cost.
It's a contract uh, for um, Marissa McClellan, who has left the employment of Dolphin County and is with Tucker Arnsberg, will, will be with Tucker Arnsberg as counsel. Uh, she served in a role as, as a director, but also as an attorney. Sort of like a solicitor for children and youth. Uh, there's no one to really uh, guide that um, entity. Uh, and so she is going to have a transitional contract as an attorney, as outside counsel. Uh, in terms of costs, uh, it is uh, not to exceed uh, one hundred thousand dollars. And when fifty thousand dollars is billed, there are certain earmarks and discussions that need to take place before any further dollars are spent on her services.
If I could add, um, for those of you who are watching on TV and listening, we are in a severe deficit of dependency attorneys for the advocacy of children. You know, the, the experience in the legal team, uh, I, I don't want to expose all that, but we, we are in need of experienced dependency attorneys. If you know of dependency attorneys and you have a passion to serve the families and children of this county, uh, your application and your interest would be welcome. That's all I will say.
Can I ask what the term of the contract is?
It's twelve months, ends at the end of the next year.
It, there's no auto renew in the contract, correct? I just want to make sure there's no auto renew clause or anything like that.
I don't believe so.
Okay, but before I vote, I'd like to just know, so I'll give you a second to just make sure it's not in there.
No.
And, and again, the, the dependency issue is not here, just here. I mean, if you're taking a look, there's a number of folks that are contracting out for legal support and, you know, there, there's a severe shortage of dependence, dependency attorneys that want to take on these roles throughout the Commonwealth.
My questions have been answered. My reason for bringing that up and separating it was I just wasn't provided enough information to make a vote prior to getting that information, so I'll make a motion to approve item number two.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Number six.
If we get the chief of staff to describe what that means.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so this is the resolution, the tax levying appropriation resolution. Uh, the board did just pass the budget, but this, uh, and there was a um, tax increase in there and a tax level or mileage rate, uh, but this actually is the adoption of said mileage rate. Um, also sets if the library uh, would have changed, but that is staying the same for this year. So that this, this resolution is the actual tax levying appropriation resolution that by law must be passed by the board.
Okay, so specifically, it's the one point five mil increase totaling twenty two percent or twenty one.
Twenty one percent.
Twenty one, yes, that's roughly correct.
Do we have a motion on item six?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Hearing that, I will second that motion. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, next is eighty four. Eighty four.
He's probably just going on the order. I have mine was forty eight.
Got it, go ahead. Forty eight?
I'm just going to remain consistent um, on my concerns with the Oak Road remediation grant and the oversight of, of, of those funds. Uh, and I, I plan to vote no.
Okay, do we have a motion for item number forty eight?
So moved.
Uh, any second, I will second it. Uh, any discussion beyond we provided?
I just want to continue to reference that I believe uh, the Pennsylvania State University Women's Clinic is deserving of these funds. I'm not in any way. Uh, I, I, I understand uh, my, my concerns are with how, how some of this came to be and that ultimately the individual was overseeing the grant process. Hopefully we can get that cleaned up in the new year and I can support every one of these. I'm confident that that will occur.
And a question for the solicitors I've asked before and will again, uh, this has gone over and under full legal review by your office.
It has, correct.
Thank you.
All right, um, do, again, we did a motion second, uh, as all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Next would be sixty eight. In order.
I guess I would just ask, um, if possible, to table this item just to, to, as, as public comment as uh, has me just asking some questions about the nature of the contract. I, I would, I would prefer to review it. I'm not opposed to it. Uh, I, I'm just curious if we're open to potentially tabling it to, to get a chance to get an understanding from the DA um, a little more and maybe review the um, contract.
Uh, if you want to make a motion to table.
I'd like to make a motion to table sixty eight.
That supersede, any other motion? Do we have a second? I'll second that motion. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Stain.
The ayes have it. All right, the uh, last is eighty four.
Uh, yes, um, I, I just wanted for clarification purposes on this item. If no action is taken today, but this board was unanimously stated, we're going to RFP items such as this, which is the governmental affairs contract. If we take no action today, but we were to select out of, I believe there are thirteen vendors who put in proposals. We were to select a vendor in January that wasn't the current vendor, would we then be paying for two governmental affairs contracts at the same time?
I guess there could.
There would be, there would be.
There could be, but what we would, what I assume we would do is once this election was made, we could start that agreement on February first and then do the thirty day notice on January one or technically January, Jan two, so that there is no overlap. It, it, nothing's requiring us to immediately begin the next.
Could there be an overlap?
There could be, but there, there would, there's nothing that's, that would make it that we would have to do that. We would just, we could set it up that whenever you guys, whenever the board would decide to do a thirty day term, notify Greenlee of the thirty day termination, we would set it up that there would be no lapse and we would start the new agreement.
And Greenlee is one of the thirteen that put in the bid proposal?
Yes.
Is it RFP or bid?
So this is an RFP process.
Okay, I wanted to clarify that. Okay, uh, so they have an opportunity to compete for this service moving forward.
Yes, and it'd even be a new agreement with them as well. Maybe if that helps answer the question. Correct, we wouldn't, it would be new terms that we would negotiate with whomever, and it, it could be Greenlee.
Thank you.
Uh, can I ask a clarifying question? We are at December eighteenth. If we were to do this today, uh, we have thirteen proposals. We have plenty of time between now and January eighteenth, I would assume, to make that decision, not to mention two meetings where we could actually uh, vote on acting. We have the eighth.
The eighth and the fifteenth.
The eighth and the fifteenth.
Yeah.
So I, I, I personally see this as a way of uh, providing a sense of urgency for this board to choose uh, through the RFP process. Uh, certainly, I know we want to interview and we want, we want to make sure we have time to choose the right uh, you know, candidate, but I, yeah, I, I, I'm of the mind that thirty days is plenty of time based on the fact that the RFP is already closed. We've already had this of the, able to review the thirteen proposals and uh, we'll, we'll, we'll choose, you know, who to interview, and it'll probably be amenable to our timeline.
But my comments are, I, I do not want to double pay anyone. So if, I want to pay the person who is providing the service without any overlap. As long as those conditions are being met, I don't see the need to term.
But we could potentially be in a position that we would be ready to hire the next one, but having to, like, let's just, let's just play this out.
Which extend the timeline. It would, you would.
You would extend the timeline, but you would retain services from one while we're ready to move forward with another, and they have to wait thirty days to represent us, correct?
Correct, but you wouldn't be double paying anyway.
We want to be double paying.
Be pushing it back.
You'd pretty much go thirty days without.
Yes, the, well, right now, the timeline we're talking about, maybe thirteen days that we'd be pushing it back if we're looking at the eighteenth of January anyway, and we just did this.
But we're not going to vote on the first, so you can't.
No, you're right.
On the first, you can't notify until the eighth.
So it's about the thirty day delay is what we're talking.
So would, would it be safe to say, and I don't know if this is appropriate debate, I'll look to the solicitor, uh, that, that we would, we want to anticipate this board having a new lobbyist selected by February one.
That's reasonable timeframe.
And if that's the case, notification on January, in, in January one, and, and again, this board can also, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Solicitor, but we could also send a notification to the board about whether or not it's our interest, since we have now selected a new uh, individual, to be able to disconnect our contract and then ratify it at the very next board. Because the, the key is, I, I want to make sure that we have a mechanism in place to avoid any kind of double payment. We cannot afford to be inefficient in any way.
You, you have those mechanisms. There, there's, there's a potential for overlap, as Commissioner Priest said, but if it's managed correctly, you should be able to avoid that.
And for semantics, so just for the record, no new lobbying firm and no new governmental affairs firm has been chosen. I keep hearing a new one. Uh, this board will decide we'll be able to.
New agreement would be a better way to say it.
For the record, we've done no interviews. We've just had submitted proposals.
Can, can I make a, maybe an amendment to this? Okay, since, since I think we're all kind of saying the same thing, just different ways. Could we vote today on the termination of the agreement starting on January one? Meaning that we will notify them at, that, that January one, and then that gives us till February one, as opposed to termination of the agreement active today. That way, it gives us even more than thirty days. But it, but it also creates a timeline where February one, we will have a new agreement with either this particular government relation or some, or some.
I, I, I don't know.
So you, you said, can we vote to terminate January one? You mean send a notice on January?
Well, we're, we're, and we're voting in essence to do that today, but I, I guess what I'm saying is that it, if we were to vote today, technically it triggers today for thirty days from now. Does that make sense?
Correct.
But, but we're, we're, I, I'm sensing my colleagues want a couple more weeks to make sure that we have till February one. But if we wait till January eighth, which is our next meeting to act on this, it's going to be till February eighth, then we are going to double pay. So I guess a, a, and I don't know what the prorated agreements are in these contracts, if we can pay a portion just of eight days or we have to pay the whole month if we're, you know, those are questions that we could dive into even deeper, but for, for the sake of us knowing what we're walking into, if right now we can make some kind of action, whether we need to restate the, 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 the agenda item to where we, starting on January one, enact the termination clause for a thirty day out, uh, are, are we all?
I just want to, I, I'm fine with keeping the, the, the current language here. I just want to make sure there's no scenario where we double pay for these services, and if there are not, then let's vote on the budget item in front of us.
And, and my, my, my only other concern is I don't want to not be covered. So th- those, those were my two issues, just since this is getting a full and thorough, I, I, I got it.
We haven't had a communication director.
I got it. Okay, so i- i- is that a motion, Commissioner Priest, to accept item eighty four?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
And just to be clear, that was without the amendment that we spent all that time talking. Okay.
Uh, is there any other, is that, we have former business. Uh, it, again, you, you can handle this, Commissioner Douglas, if you like.
Um, I brought up last time my concerns about um, the efficient and effectiveness of uh, efficiency and effectiveness of the free parking that exists uh, within the acceptance of um, where we provide, uh, I believe gaming dollars for uh, pre-parking from five to seven, if I'm correct, in downtown. Um, I, I'm, I'm willing to, to vote to approve this with expressed desire for data on the parking subsidy uh, for its uses and effectiveness. Uh, for, for the next year, for us to get some data on that so that we can see that that investment is actually um, bringing, is bringing people to downtown to assist our businesses in their growth and development and uh, continue to, you know, ultimately help downtown Harrisburg continue to grow. So that, I just want to ensure that that, which, which is the intent of that money is actually, there's some data showing that it's actually doing what it's intended to do.
That's your motion?
Well, it's, I'm just, I, I, do we, do we need to put that in a motion or is that just a statement and then, then we can direct, well, we can direct our chief clerk to, to communicate that.
We have to do a formal acceptance of their budget.
I'm, I'm glad that, that you added that we wanted to do what it's supposed to be doing, which is benefit the downtown businesses. I did have a, a conversation with Mayor Williams. She's asking that we fully support this for another year and that I did bring up the concern that there were uh, city vehicles observed parked in some of those spots, and she said that will not occur.
And, and I'm going to make my, my vote on this, and Jay's probably going to get upset with me, but contingent upon participation of the end users. So if we're not willing to collect data to ensure the ability for this to occur, uh, this may be conflicting and confusing, but I will adopt only if the end users are going to allow us to get the data to support future investments.
That's what I'm asking for as well. I just want the data to support the investment, right?
Correct, and, and I think there, we talked about the active participation in order to do that. And restaurant tours would need to accept parking passes and ensure that those are remitted.
Okay, well, that being said, so who's going to administer this process where we change the current agreement to doing this with the parking and having the businesses?
We're, we're accepting the budget. We'll leave that in Jay's hand.
And what's the timeline to, what's the first timeline to see whether these, these items are met?
I, I would say no later than February one.
It's, is that something that you think is something you can do thirty day? I mean, that's probably.
We're, we're sure.
We're.
We certainly can request the data we have in the past, and I just think that they didn't understand that, you know, we're, this is a um, not a request, it's a mandate that you better understand where the dollars are going and what the benefit is.
If I go downtown, if I'm from out of town or I'm from Conawago Township or Lycans, and I come downtown at five fifteen for dinner, I will have no reason to know at that point in the first month of next year, unless there's some sort of message going out or signs put on these parking spots that I'm supposed to go into the business and get that, get that parking pass. And I'm not saying, I think this is a great idea, and my colleagues brought up. I totally agree with it. I'm just saying, let's, let's be reasonable about a timeline here and making this work.
I think, I think there's a miscommunication going on. I know we had talked about the idea of an actual change in how it's administered. I don't, and I'll leave this to Jay. I don't know if we can mandate that for this next year. I think what I understand the board to want to do is accept these operating capital budgets with the mandate that we want the information. And going forward, if we're going to continue this, I would say to the next year, there needs to be a way for you to capture this information, and that may end up in changing how it's administered. That's a good summation of.
That's my understanding as well.
But I, I think there needs to be a public relations campaign and a direct effort to be able to engage restaurant owners, the city and us, to be able to inform folks, putting them on the machines, giving direction. All of those things should occur.
I, I think step one is to get the data so we have a better understanding of what actually is occurring and where the revenue is going.
That, that compliance is going to be important. I guess it will determine whether or not we make this future investment.
Yes.
Got it. Yeah. All right. So the motion was made, and seconded it. All those in favor to accept?
I don't, I don't, I don't think there was a motion made. I think we just.
I entertain a motion to accept the twenty twenty-five operating and capital budgets for the parking system, keeping in mind the direction that's been provided any public meeting by the Board of Commissioners today.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Thanks, Jay.
Thank you.
New business?
Yes, I have, I have a new business. Given that today, our budget reflects sixteen dollar an hour minimum wage. Bringing a positive board for once, gentlemen. I'm excited about this, our, our county employee minimum wage. And here's what I want to say. This affects ninety-one of our employees. Ninety-one employees are going to be affected by this. And I, I want to acknowledge a couple employees, not necessarily by name, but just by their earning. Fourteen dollars an hour. We have someone earning just at fourteen dollars an hour who's worked here for seventeen years. We have someone earning just at fourteen dollars an hour who's worked here for ten years. But both those people are full-time employees making less than thirty thousand a year. I mean, living in this particular county at that rate is, is a real challenge. There's, there's, it's impossible without a second job, I, I think. I mean, I couldn't imagine. We have one employee earning twelve forty-eight an hour who's worked here four years. This is going to really impact people's lives. And, and I also want to emphasize that the investment for this, from a budgetary standpoint, was only a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So it's a pretty, it's a pretty minimal in, investment, but with a, a huge impact, I think, on our, our, our hard workers here at the county. And, and I think with inflation challenges, housing challenges, this is really going to help us, you know, I think, attract and retain a talented workforce. And, you know, when I look at Pennsylvania State Minimum Wage, seven twenty-five an hour, I, I can't imagine, you know, how you could live off seven twenty-five an hour. You know, I think, we, I don't believe we've ever had a resolution for minimum wage in, in Dauphin County. I think there was an agreement between the Board of Commissioners, correct me if I'm wrong, at twelve dollars an hour at some point. Is that correct? Yeah. But, but I want to, in, in, for the sake of new business, submit a resolution to, to create a resolution for a minimum wage for Dauphin County for, for our, our workers, for our employees of sixteen dollars per hour. I'm going to read the resolution, and then I'm going to submit it to our Solicitor's Office for Review, and hopefully it will be on our agenda on January eighth in our meeting. "A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Dauphin County, Pennsylvania, establishing a minimum wage for Dauphin County employees of sixteen dollars per hour. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Dauphin County recognizes the importance of fair compensation for employees, and the role it plays in enhancing employees' satisfaction, retention, and economic stability within the county. And whereas Dauphin County is committed to providing equitable and competitive wages for its workforce, ensuring employees are compensated fairly for their labor and dedication. And whereas the current economic conditions and cost of living increases in Dauphin County have made it essential to reevaluate the minimum wage for county employees. And whereas setting a minimum wage of sixteen dollars per hour for all Dauphin County employees reflects the county's dedication to fostering a stable and productive workforce. And whereas this resolution aligns with the board's commitment to responsibly govern and the well-being of each, of its employees while maintaining fiscal responsibility. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Dauphin County, Pennsylvania as follows. Minimum wage requirement effective January eighth, twenty twenty-five, the minimum wage for all Dauphin County employees, including full-time, part-time, and seasonal employees, shall be set at sixteen dollars per hour. Employee option to decline minimum wage, provided such chosen option does not violate federal, state, or local law or ordinances. Employees who, for personal reasons, such as financial limitations related to retirement benefits or other considerations, wish to earn less than the established minimum wage, may submit a formal written request to the Dauphin County Human Services, Human Resources Department to decline the minimum wage adjustment. Such requests shall be reviewed and approved on an individual basis. Compliance and implementation, the Dauphin County Human Resources Department is hereby directed to implement the necessary steps to ensure compliance with this resolution, including making any necessary adjustments to employees' wages. Budgetary adjustments the Chief Clerk and Budget Office shall review and make any necessary budgetary amendments to accommodate the wage adjustments while ensuring fiscal responsibility. Future review, the Board of Commissioners shall review the minimum wage periodically to ensure it remains consistent with economic conditions and county objectives. So I believe, I don't believe we need a motion to put that on the agenda for next week, but we will have a resolution for a sixteen dollar an hour minimum wage for our county employees.
And for the record, that'll be the first meeting of twenty twenty-five.
First meeting of twenty twenty-five, January eighth. Yes.
As one of the commissioners who brought forth the twelve dollar an hour increase several years back, when, I know specifically housekeepers and facility maintenance department, and I see the directors here, we, they were making eight dollars and change an hour. We increased that to twelve dollars an hour. I think this is something that this board could and should wholly support moving forward, that sixteen dollar an hour minimum. So thank you for bringing that forward.
I, I would concur. And, and again, part of investment in your economy is also figuring out a way to have folks be able to actually live and, and be this, it goes a small way in that. And I think even more professional, professionalization of jobs and upward mobility, and how we restructure county government moving forward, pay off even more opportunities for folks that have a middle-class living as well, no matter where you start. We've already banned the box. We've already are looking at even in our minimum education and training requirements of folks who have criminal records not being denied, the ability to work here in Dauphin County, and ensuring that this place is open for business from all of our community, to be able to both work and contribute. I think that goes a long way in, in that recognition and dealing with those issues. I, today, just two things I want to thank, if I could. Did you want to make any comments prior to, to freeze the, for this? Oh, this new business. I'm sorry. It's been a long meeting. And I, I've no new business. I just wanted to thank the folks who've put forth holiday parties in both sides. Is there any additional new business, Mr. Priest? Do you have any new business? Our commissioners' discussions and actions, I figured that kind of.
The, the only thing I want to say is happy holidays to all of our workers here at the county and certainly all of our residents of the county. I hope you get an opportunity to take some time, to spend some time with your family and friends between now and the new year.
Mr. Priest.
Chris Davis. I want to thank Chris Davis, the Budget Director, and his team for the work they did over the last several months preparing today's budget. We may not always agree on things like today's budget. However, we work together as a team on behalf of the residents of Dauphin County. I want to thank our row officers, the department heads for the work that they did in helping to prepare this budget as well. And everybody, happy holidays and Merry Christmas to you all.
Agreed. I think, you know, this is happy Hanukkah, happy holidays. Wanza, not Hanukkah.
Mr. Epstein.
But I, I'd like to say that, you know, we've had a, a challenge over the last year, and I think adversity reveals character. And I think the residents and the staff of Dauphin County have continued to amaze me related to their investment in their jobs and the people they serve, and the cooperation, and the ability for us to be able to promote a level of change. I think the direction is going to be, hopefully with some tailwinds coming in twenty twenty-five. So the idea of better service, the ability to help people, that's why we got into this job, is the ability to actually create better access to systems, figure out ways to manage budgets, figure out ways to be at the head of social service curves and solve issues, not react to them. So here's to a twenty twenty-five with solving issues and improving county government. And part of that is figuring out a way to trim ourselves down and, and focus on the needs of the people and those who sent us here to do a job. And, and all of us, I believe, are share that commitment, and that's been pretty clear to be moving forward. Just two other things real quick. We served a, a close to two thousand families at the drive-through at the Farm Show, folks of over three hundred percent of the federal poverty level, and, and we did it through volunteers. Our volunteer staff, who's done this for sixteen years, is getting older, and they're getting tired. So this is another call for, you know, more energy, resources, the needs that we're able to serve at those times of years to provide basic necessities, bikes and toys for folks over the holidays. The gift isn't given. And for any of you who want to get involved in meaningful ways to be able to help the community, we could always use your help. Secondly, for those who help serve the families with the toy drive and toy shop from children, youth, they served over a thousand children. And, you know, they let them come, it's, it's a, basically, they come in and shop for what they want for Christmas. And their ability to actually check, select, pick out gifts, and to ensure that they also are recognized with the love and the appreciation over the holiday season, particularly when they didn't ask to be put in this position, is critically important. And another value that our staff gives without pay, and in many cases, many volunteers to be able to serve. So I just wanted to give our thanks in the holiday season to those who have served families within our community. And then lastly, the courts, row officers, employees of this county. Again, I, I want to say a big debt of gratitude. It's not about folks up here, it's about the people that carry the job out every day. And, and I'd put up our group against anybody. So thank you.
And if I could expound upon that thanking those individuals who serve on the various boards throughout Dauphin County. Almost all of them are unpaid, so they're volunteers. Some of the boards are paid. And I urge our residents who are watching, or media could put it out there, this Board of Commissioners, we're open for business. If, and if our residents want to engage and participate in Dauphin County and government, go to our website, see what boards are available to serve on. There's a lot of boards, a lot of appointments that we make each year. So if you're interested in serving on our boards, go on our website, dauphincounty.gov, check out the different boards and committees that we have throughout Dauphin County. If you're interested, communicate with us, let us know, and we make those decisions starting at the beginning of the year. Thank you.
Controller.
Treasurer. All right. Correspondents will be directed to our Chief Clerk and, and taken with the serious nature in which they are sent and the appropriate level of action that's required. It's now time in the agenda for public participation. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to participate?
You'd be next.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Gary Lanker, Executive Director of Tri-County Housing, and I'm happy to be here and want to thank you for your support of our nonprofit organizations home by our counseling program. We have been struggling to fill some gaps, and this will provide that. The money, of course, came from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, and I did address that organization. As happy as I am that you supported this request, I just shared with you that there was a second item that we had presented in consultation. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was Mr. Connor sitting there from the back. I did not see him. But there was a second item that we had presented to the Trust Fund Board to assist us in hiring additional, unadditional staff person. It is great to have a one Saturday a month, eight-hour homebuyer counseling class that gives a certificate for people to access your first time homebuyer program and other programs. Many of these individuals need additional one-on-one counseling, credit counseling. I do not have the staff to do that. We had made a proposal to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, and I had talked to Commissioner Douglas about that when I met with him, to help us fund a second staff position at forty thousand dollars a year. The position is going to be much higher than that, probably the sixty-five thousand dollar range. We're looking for assistance at forty thousand a year for three years. I would like to work with the Commissioners to see if there's some way in the next few months that we could, we could work that out.
I think there's, no, need to be, could you take that up?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Yeah.
Affordable Housing. One last item I'd like to publicly share. I sent the three of you a press release. Tri-County Housing, who is in its thirty-fourth year of providing affordable housing to low to modern income persons and families, not only here in Dauphin County, but Cumberland Perry Counties, was the lone recipient of a Federal Home Loan Bank of Pittsburgh Affordable Housing Program grant of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a project that we will be breaking ground on this spring in the North Fourth Street here in the city of Harrisburg. It will create five affordable townhomes for sale with a preference for veterans. I am truly excited. It is a first-time organization under my tenure, tenure, has received that grant. It is a very competitive grant. We have had three unsuccessful applications, two for Steel Borough, one for a project up in Halifax. So we're really excited, and I want to share that with you. Again, the only, the only recipient in all of Dauphin County for that Federal Home Loan Bank of Pittsburgh Affordable Housing Program. So thank you very much. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you for your work on that.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Nyquan Manning. I'm here to advocate for the homeless in this city. I've been here since two thousand and sixteen. Recently, I left abusive relationships, so I'm homeless. So only thing I see, the only shelter that I have is the Destin Mission and the Downtown Deli Bread. The Downtown Deli Bread don't have enough room to accommodate the homeless, ultimate destination. So I see that it focuses on affordable housing, but I never said to build a shelter. I keep building affordable housing and helping the veterans, but what about people like me? I don't have no kids. I try to get funding to like, to get a apartment. Another issue is these landlords. They charge three times the income. They charge first month security. That's, I mean, first month rent security and last month's rent. So I was coming from New York City. The things that happen here is unbelievable to me because how I'm supposed to get back on my feet if you're charging me three times the income, or you're charging me last month's rent. So it seemed like y'all don't care about the homeless, truthfully. Some nights, I can't even get in the Downtown Deli Bread. I have to walk around all night. I caught up with Destin Mission. They don't have no room. So it's like, what is, what is the real solution for the homeless? Is y'all going to keep ignoring the problems, or are y'all going to do something about it?
First of all, thank you for being here and expressing your concerns in a public meeting. I appreciate you being able to do that. Second of all, you know, the ideas about trying to find additional shelters. I know we have Susquehanna, Safe Harbor. I, I don't, you know, obviously the Catholic charities. Look, I want to make sure that you are aware of the, all of the shelters that exist, and they're not missing any out. And also figuring out a way to deal with sort of a case management plan, to be able to ultimately get you from where you're at into some level of the direction towards housing. So if you could hang out afterwards, Randy Jaeger, who's our Director of Human Services, is here, want to figure out a way to make sure that we're aware of all your situation and chart a pathway forward for you.
And I'll speak to a broader conversation that's taking place right now. Randy, myself, and the city, and the, and the Governor's Office are meeting regularly to explore opportunities for, for options that exist, to expand our services to the unhoused, especially because we're aware of the I-83 bridge expansion and the challenge that that's going to put for the PennDOT and Camden. And so we are actively making plans and pulling resources together. And so there, there is investment coming in this calendar year. At the same time, I, I feel your pain in the sense that it's, it's not enough. We got it. We, we, we need more. We need more resources from federal and state level. And I think we need more coordinated planning as all the leaders that we have here in the county. And so thank you for bringing this to our attention and spotlighting this, because it needs to be on the hearts and minds of constituents in Dauphin County, how we can do this better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please stick around and talk to Randy. Yeah.
It's a one-ticket event. No, no.
I have multiple personalities. So on the first personality, which is rock the capital, I would point out an inconsistency. You ratified contracts for eighty-six and eighty-seven. They were the only such contracts for legal fees that didn't have a name or a fee attached. And I would respectfully request that at the next meeting, you include that in your data. I, it's been Nies Wallace. I would not have supported it, but I think out of a sense of fairness, you know, we, we, we know what they're getting.
I did state that it was Adam Santucci, but you're right. We should, we should have the fee schedule on it, for sure.
Secondly, I, I know there's been a lot of press coverage on public relations advocacy. I would point out, whatever you do, the full-on budget rugby has already started. The Governor's budget is going to be first week of February. So I would suggest, whatever you do in January, make sure you have an advocate. If you don't advocate yourself on the Hill, because this is a critical time. And honestly, in this rugby match, if you're not at the trial, you don't get anything.
You're on the menu.
Yeah, that's exactly it. Now, the most significant thing I want to talk about today, and it's something that has been covered in the media, but not enough, is Three Mile Island. I want to point out to you that Three Mile Island Unit One, which is owned by Constellation, has not yet filed, but will file.
it has not yet filed, but will file for a license, which will oppose and likely lose. However, on the property side, that company added two new steam generators in two thousand and nine. Three hundred million, just bought a transformer, one million. They secured a government loan for one point six billion. Electricity on the market goes for eighty dollars a kilowatt. They got a buck twenty. What I'm saying is we're losing money by not reassessing Three Mile Island Unit One. Even if it doesn't restart, it has full value as a transmission center. So I would strongly encourage you, I'm going to come back next month with my formal presentation. The second aspect of this, and it's been done in New York. The TMI one has seven hundred metric tons of high-level radioactive waste on an island in a river that empties into the Chesapeake Bay. Moronic. Here's what's coming next. They're full. That is called an independent spent fuel storage installation. They're full. TMI two, which is owned by a LLC out of Utah, pays, by the way, pays no taxes, which we need to look into. Their building is known as an isophy for a really nasty batch of radioactive waste, nine casks. We're going to be the only generation site which doesn't generate energy, but has a ton, a ton of nuclear waste. By the way, Unit One is going to need to build another isophy. There's about forty-seven casks in an isophy. You can get fifty, but you take out three, so you so you move around.
Could you define what is a is?
Isophy. It's, yeah, that's how I would call it. Yeah, now as I become mature, the formal name is uh independent spent fuel storage installation, which by the way, should have been built with third dollars, was built with decommissioning dollars. So what I am suggesting to you is that you need to have, if you haven't, I can't tell you what you you do, a conversation with Constellation and TMI two solutions about reassessing their property value. They're under the PERTA protocol. We get next to nothing. We
We've just had experience.
Yeah, we just went through that radio with Norfolk.
Do anything with it.
Yeah. By the way, uh we, I think we can all agree that was a good settlement, uh given who they were. Um yeah, and and uh finally, let me just, I I I guess add this, not I guess, but I will add this, is you're going to be asked, uh and I hope
Time limit, just so you know.
That was for me?
All right. It's it's for, it's for everybody. We're trying to be consistent with the three minutes.
Are you, are you?
If you could finish up your thought.
No, no, no. My third personality is, let me speak as a school board member and I'll
Did that give you three, three-minute segments? Is that what we're asking?
It depends. I could be simple. I could have sixteen personalities till we're done with this.
If you can make your last point, I appreciate it.
The last point is I wanted to actually uh thank you. We've worked cooperatively with you uh on Bureau of Assessment Appeal on reverse tax appeals. Where the district has been able to generate revenues of one point one million, which we'll need for our new full day pre-kindergarten. Uh so everyone Bureau of Assessment Appeal staff is excellent, really for uh uh did a great job. But I'll be back ne- in next um uh meeting, and I'll bring with you what New York has done, which is tax radioactive waste.
I'm always interested in learning. I look forward to getting together.
See, we'll get together.
Happy Hanukkah.
Yeah.
Uh public comment, any additional public comment?
Oh, no, sorry. Sweetland Township. Um, good morning. I came today and listened to the budget presentation, and it is upsetting that the library did not have the mileage increase. I am assuming, not because I want to pay more taxes, please people, but because I want people to be paid a decent wage, and I love that sign Commissioner Douglas put up here for the sixteen dollar an hour minimum wage. I think it's like not even enough to live on, and it's high time we got there and further. Um but I still believe the library people deserve a raise as well. Um and I believe that it is incumbent upon you commissioners now to like see that that board get it through because we all know who they are. I looked them up online. And uh we can all just make sure that that they work to get those people a raise because um it's actually quite despicable that they pulled it off the table, to be honest. Um and then finally, I want to talk about whole home repair funds. Um I have been asking about where we are with whole home repair funds and haven't gotten a straight answer for a while. So I saw it was on the agenda for the RDA meeting, the redevelopment authority. So I went down there and I went to the redevelopment authority meeting and asked again the status. And George O'Connor was telling the whole board, we're like the best in the state. We've done all this stuff, but then he's like not telling really where the money was spent. I asked like, can you show us like what's been done? And he's like, we're the first, we're doing the most, which I know isn't true. Because like I've dealt with this in a lot of counties. I've talked to a lot of administrators of this in a lot of different counties, just like ours. And I know we're behind. Like I just know he's lying and he's lying to that board. And I was, I specifically asked, I was told they were going to give me the report, the last quarterly report um that they submitted to the state so that he could prove to me that what he was saying is true. Then they couldn't get the printer to work. So um I didn't get it, and I was promised it would be put online. Now, it's a long story to tell you. It's still not online. Um I was promised they would all be put online immediately so that we could see those reports, and they're not online. And I believe the reason they're not online is because they're lying. Um I know you guys have seen them, um but I really strongly suggest you guys reach out to other counties. Lehigh County, for example, would be a great one to reach out to. Even um Berks County, it's run through um Habitat for Humanity. But you should also reach out because I believe that they are probably administering their funds much better. He also seemed to state that without muster that he would not be able to complete whole home repair stuff. Like he's like, we don't have to hire a new staff, and when we hire staff, they're not that good. And there's like a lot of stuff going on down there, and I really just think that we need better oversight of these boards and and I don't know how that happens. Um but there's a lot of boards and a lot of stuff happening, including what uh George O'Connor was putting forward was a reconsideration to give light remediation money to Web FX. A company who he stated in his presentation did not need the money and was going to bring their business and their mansion to Harrisburg regardless, and he said it would basically be a favor and an incentive when they've already told that board that they don't need the incentive, like they love it, they want the free money, but they'll be here. And to me, that triggered, there's a reason that George O'Connor is pushing so hard for Web FX to get money from a light remediation fund when admittedly that project has nothing to do with light remediation. That building's only been sitting empty for like two years. They don't need the money to renovate. He wants to do it as an incentive. Think folks need to like figure out what's going on here because something's not right. So thank you for that.
Just for the record, uh George Connor is our uh economic George Connor. You, not O'Connor, yeah. That's just George Connor.
Okay.
Connor, yeah. But we knew what you meant. Let the record reflect.
If I, if I might add to that, uh this is the last meeting of the year, so Oda, I want to, I want to thank you again publicly. It was over two years ago that you contacted me.
Bless you.
Via social media, bless you, X formerly Twitter. Uh I see this message coming in and said to contact you, and you provided us with the information that the state had a program called Whole Home Repairs, and we should apply, and the deadline was literally within a couple weeks of that. Um and I did contact George Connor, and his office did put in the application, and and we did receive two point eight million dollars uh for that funding. So if you hadn't contacted me, I don't believe anybody here was even aware that funding was available. So the folks out there, if you hear something, uh I mean, we have folks on staff, but there's always things that we could, you know, we can use more information at all times. So when you hear about things, you think we're not applying for it, or we should, reach out to us. We work for you. There's three of us here. Uh we have staff who on our website communicated with us that way. Uh but the the whole home repairs, we put that out uh for advertisement, and then we we put it out on the street. And literally within, I believe it was two hours, every single applicant was in and filled. We even had more that came in. So to the state, as they work on their budget. Eric, you just brought that up. Uh over our lobbyists is whether it continues to be Greenlee or somebody new. Uh we're going to direct them to to spend more time at the Capitol and look for those dollars for us because we could have easily had thirty million dollars go out that day. That's, that's how great the need is.
State, but it's not going, I don't think it's actually going out. That's what I'm saying.
Uh we hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
Hello again. Um I made a list of things, but some of them have been talked about. But this is the time of year um when we reflect on the year that has passed. And so when we look at twenty twenty four, one of the things that the county did was create uh better public access with the live streaming, people are watching. Um I just looked at two years of minutes, uh twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-two, looking at who came for public comment. And there were months of meetings where there would be no public comment um at all. Um and so I think that what we are doing with the live stream is helping people have access to what happens here at the county and paying attention to that. I appreciate that the budget hearings were also livestreamed. I encourage you to continue to do that, like with the gaming grants. Um and really kind of pushing the authorities to also uh livestream their meetings. I I've also been to IDA meetings. I have then looked at um minutes afterwards, found that minutes don't necessarily reflect very well what happened at the meeting. Uh I pulled Housing Authority minutes last week uh for several years. Those minutes don't even tell us who is present at those meetings. Like there isn't even a roll call. Like how, how is this a reflection of what happens with public money in a space that is supposed to have public access? It's difficult to find when those meetings happen. Yes, um IDA, the redevelopment authority, they are advertising. So they are meeting of the letter of the law as is required. But what they're not doing is publicizing their meetings, and that is a whole different animal to, for people to know that it's happening and try to get there. I appreciate the work that's been done this year on looking at contracts, especially those that are no bid, no show, auto renew and moving to the RFP process. Um just like the item sixty-eight, I believe it is, that I um brought to your attention today. I'd like to know what some of the deliverables are, and especially when something is talking about strategies. I'd like to know, you know, what, what does that mean for the county and what are we getting for that up to forty thousand dollars? Um and then again, thank you for increasing the minimum salary to sixteen dollars an hour. Thank you, um Commissioner Priest, for the work that you did in raising it to twelve dollars an hour. Years ago, I appreciated your comments today about what the commissioners might do in the new year and also registering my um sadness that the library was not part of this process this time because of what was probably pressure by their board. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any other public comment? And then entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Well, I'll second it. Happy New Year.
Discussion, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.